Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, June 27, 2023. And Item B, Call for a Meeting and Set Tuesday, July 18, 2023, as a date for hearing on Certified Assessment Corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next are citizen comments. Is anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm still working on my protest. You know, I find it extremely difficult to understand the instructions as well as the website when you look up property and comparable properties, and then you find out they're not really all that comparable. So trying to decide on what basis that you protest. Basically, we can only really protest that we can't afford our houses anymore because of property taxes. But you people say it's the responsibility of the taxing authorities, such as the school board. So I guess what I've decided to do for right now was to just say, here's the average of the last seven years of my property tax increases, and it's not supposed to be more than seven and a half percent. So I have in half the figures, the average figure of over those seven years and said it works out to just a little over seven percent. That's the basis of which I'll argue with the referee, who's probably a real estate person. And I think that's a conflict of interest, actually. Their job is to get the best price they can for a property, but to make a profit. That doesn't necessarily match with my job, which is to make a living and to preserve it for future generations, if possible. But then you have that inheritance tax that comes along on top of that. I often hear Mr. Morgan talk about five years ago and the tax maximums that they were trying to get on levies and stuff. But then you guys don't set the levies, do you? And I didn't see any break on that yet either, even through the state legislature, which sometimes you guys blame them. But you go down and lobby them against me, too. So I think that it needs an entire rethinking and a new way of figuring the property values. It can't be on the basis of an outside real estate investor paying an exorbitant price for a property and then turning it into a multifamily dwelling. That happened recently, maybe down in my neighborhood. And the cars are parked both sides of the street going the same way, which is illegal. And there's probably more people in that house than should be. I looked it up, and the owner's probably out of town, and he's sub-rented to a bunch of crazy students. And they like to pack him, as they did a few years ago, at the house on the other end of the street. And I suppose eventually the real estate companies will tear it down, put up a multi-youth apartment building, and drive the rest of the neighbors out. So please rethink the property taxing and tell the state to rethink it, or whoever you think is really responsible. But we have to hold you guys responsible, don't we? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. We have Resolutions D through G. There is no need for executive session under Board of Equalization, so the motion can include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting Held Tuesday, June 27, 2023. And Item B, Approval of Claims Submitted for Payment Process Through Tuesday, July 11, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, Items A through O. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'd like to discuss the Resolution approving Carlson West Pavandra Architects for Douglas County Corrections, Community Mental Health, to develop supplemental analysis services for renovation of Douglas County Corrections, $12,000 budgeted. It has Jeff McGill from Douglas County Public Property listed here, and I don't know if Mr. McGill or anybody from Public Property is here, Mr. Pavandra or anybody from Pavandra is here. This is a multimillion-dollar project. I would have hoped that somebody would have come down to talk about this if there were questions.
I can answer any questions that you might have, Commissioner.
That's great. This is regarding the need for an alternative to what Pavandra has already provided, to comply with the ARPA requirements to review available properties for use of ARPA funds before you go and build new construction, which is the original Pavandra proposal, is new construction at the jail. Jail expansion is also a suspect category under ARPA regulations. And so I'm interested in making this proposal as robust alternative as possible. In the exhibits under this Item B of the Consent Agenda is an Exhibit A, which is a letter from Mr. Pavandra to Mr. McGill. Again, I wish one of them was here, so we could talk about this a little bit, which says, Dear Jeff, this supplement following on Phase One and Two Studies for Douglas County Mental Health Facilities is to formally document prior work and conclusions. Actually, I don't know that that's what we want, but CWPA, which is Pavandra's company, will compile and enhance previous information regarding renovation of existing housing areas within the Douglas County Department of Corrections Facility for new mental health spaces. Actually, they didn't do any previous information regarding renovation of existing housing areas within the Douglas County Department of Corrections Facility for new mental health spaces. So there's nothing for them to compile and enhance there. What we are interested in is seeing a proposal, which has already been submitted to this board, fleshed out with the same information that they provided with the new mental health facility, which we didn't specifically require. And that would take existing vacant Douglas County Corrections mods and convert them for these mental health uses, also drug and alcohol uses. We had, at the last time that we toured that, over 100 vacant beds and vacant mods in the Douglas County Correction Center. That specific area hasn't been addressed by Pavandra at all, or Public Property, in any of this discussion. So that specific area is what we're looking at for renovation of existing housing areas within the Douglas County Department of Corrections Facility for new mental health spaces. It's probable
One minute.
that this would result in a renovation project projection far lower than the 30-plus million-dollar proposal for the new construction that is the only proposal that Pavandra has put before us, and runs into many, many, many ARPA requirement difficulties, as pointed out by our contractor, Deloitte, and by our own county attorney, not the least of which is jail expansion is suspect per se. Utilization of new construction when you have available capacity is also suspect. I think there are people here today from the public who also have questions about this, that might want to address that same issue. This would be the time to do that. The proposal that we put before the board goes back to last October.
Thank you.
I'll come back.
Commissioner Boyle.
Just looking at the consent agenda on Item J.
Oh, can we finish B before we go on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you had a question on B. Sorry. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Goes back to at least last October, when I met with our staff and Mr. Pavandra on this specific issue, and repeated requests that I and others have made between then and now, including formal submission of an alternative proposal for this and the other mental health campus that we have on 42nd Street, to try to avoid the problems that we've recently experienced with needless construction projects that are overpriced, and at least one case, inappropriate for its intended use, and get us the best thing at the best price for the people of Douglas County and the inmates of Douglas County Correction Center. This is something that shouldn't have been this difficult. We shouldn't be here in July discussing something that came up in June, long before any of the so-called town halls or other hearings were held, and has been repeatedly requested and denied by the people who are driving for new construction and expansion of the jail. This is something that I think will provide us with a viable alternative, save us a lot of money, and provide us with more funds available to do what we need to do to serve the mental health needs of the residents of Douglas County. So I would ask that the study also involve discussions with the board members, which doesn't appear in this, what is characterized as a supplement to the work already done by Pavandra, to provide us with loads and loads of information about how to spend all of our money on new construction that we don't need, at a high price, that we don't need to pay, that doesn't best serve the needed mental health population of our county. So this is a step in the right direction. We just need to make sure, and I think my colleagues, at least most of them, share this sentiment, that it does, in fact, give us an alternative utilizing existing space in the Douglas County Correction Center. And that alternative includes cost, space, at least as detailed as what we received on the, at least as far as I'm concerned, unrequested new construction proposals that they repeatedly provide this board. This board has never determined that we need any new construction on this, but certain individuals apparently have compelled Mr. Pavandra to provide nothing but new construction alternatives to the board. And ARPA specifically says, if you've got available facilities, explain to us why you're not using those. And so that's the intent of this. I would commend the idea of developing this alternative, and I'm happy to work with Mr. Pavandra and the people in the community who, on their own, have stepped forward to involve themselves in making this the best project possible at the lowest possible cost. So that's, I think, what we need to put in the record today. It would be great if we could have had a better discussion today with the affected parties from Public Property and Mr. Pavandra's company. They don't appear to be here. I see Mr. McGill's finally joined us on Zoom. But there's not time, as they know.
One minute.
in the consent agenda, as you just heard, for them to have discussions with us. There is time, however, for any individuals from the public right now to speak to this issue on consent. Thank you.
Okay, no other commissioners for this item? Or do you, Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bloomingdale had actually mentioned that he could speak to some of this, and I was going to leave him a little time in order to do that. But and I don't know, certainly not meant as being critical, I hear over the last nine minutes what Commissioner Kavanaugh said. And I like to, at the risk of sounding contrarian, I like to oversimplify things. And this is a complicated issue. What I'm getting at is, over the last nine minutes or 10 minutes that Commissioner Kavanaugh spoke, I don't know, no offense, Commissioner, I don't know what you want. So, again, at the risk of oversimplifying things, what I'd like to do is try to figure out, and that's why it's on consent, because if I didn't think that we could simplify this by putting, by plugging Pavandra in or any other contractor, to actually find out what our existing capacity looks like, if he gets up here after all of this work, and his team gets up here after all of this work and said, what did you do? What are we looking at? The scope of services in this document doesn't tell me anything. What I want to know at the end is, what did you do? And what are we analyzing at this point? So I'm not exactly sure what is wanted here, other than to try to maybe look for other contractors to weigh the cost of actually figuring out what our existing capacity looks like. I know what the previous resolution looked like. That was what we're dealing with, and that is to provide up to about $30 million to provide extra capacity for corrections. If things like this are going to get clawed back, or we have to do our analysis, this would indicate to me, after reading this agreement, that we're going to do that analysis. If the analysis isn't sufficient, we as a board go, whoa, 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 that's not sufficient. What did you look at at the existing corrections facility? What kind of assets do we have right now that could be implemented? And what type of build would we have to do? And does it qualify under ARPA? So I guess I don't know. And again, Commissioner Kavanaugh's smart. I don't know what is wanted here, other than, we can have all the public input. I want that. But after reading through this, and I'll leave two minutes for Mr. Bloomingdale, I'd like to figure out exactly what our goals and objectives are. And when this is done, can we achieve the questions, the appropriate questions that we need for the Pavandra architects or anybody else to come to a conclusion? I'm assuming, I hope, that that's going to be the case. So I would defer to Mr. Bloomingdale. I don't know if he's got some opinion on this or not.
Yeah, we do have public properties on Zoom, and they've been on since the beginning. My understanding is that there was discussions, not formal study done, but there was discussions with Al Pavandra and Corrections of Public Properties about would it be viable, feasible to renovate? And at that time, the informal look at it was that it was not feasible. But the board wants to take a second look at it, a more formal look at it, and so that's what's going to be done. As far as any of the specifics about what is going to be done, Jerry and Jeff are online if there's any questions. But just to correct the record just briefly, this is not about capacity at the jail. This is about taking mentally ill detainees and putting them in a more therapeutic rehabilitative environment, not trying to create more capacity or just capacity at the jail.
Okay. Any other questions by commissioners on Item B? Commissioner Morgan?
Patrick, thank you for your comments. Is the number of beds that they're thinking about in that proposal roughly around, I don't know, 60 to 70 beds in the new facility? You know, we went in that direction exactly?
Yeah, approximately 70 is my understanding.
And right now, we really don't have any beds. Am I correct in what I just stated?
Well, we have a, I think it's called the AMOD, Medical Unit, but we don't have any environment that's really geared towards treatment of the patients or the detainees there that have real serious mental health issues.
Okay. The other thing that, you know, I think could be helpful is, we continue to move forward with this. I know where the sheriff's annex is, at the far southeast part of the correction facility that's used totally by the sheriff for offices and where they serve warrants and that kind of thing. And I've been through it a couple times over the years. But I'm not sure, and I understand they could be anywhere in the downtown area, preferably, in a strictly office space and not connected with the correction facility. I'm not sure if that part of it with some add-on couldn't be used and could provide some savings, possibly. And I think we should, and I'm not sure if it's been done, at least look at it. And I've said it before, the board meetings, I always like to make sure that, as I conduct myself, that I'm looking at all options and backup plan. But I think Jeff and, you know, the group always really do a great job. Mr. Leahy especially, who's been with the county a long while, really provides excellent information and background and backup information. So I think that's something, you know, as we're moving forward with this, that should be looked at a little bit. And I think that provides at least 11,000 square feet and maybe even a little more than that, which could provide us some savings of those ARPA funds. So with that, I'll stop.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do believe, I'm going to say something else, and I do believe I'd like maybe Jeff to weigh in when I'm done. But let me, let me put it in context. What's our goal here? What's our goal with having Pavandra on this consent agenda, to pay $12,000 to expand the discussion and to create more analysis? It's my understanding that's the goal. If we didn't, if we have an issue with Pavandra, let's talk about that. I mean, I don't, not yet. I mean, the architects have taken our guidelines and ran with those. I think they're qualified. I ask again, what is our goal? What's our objective? It's my understanding, based on what this last opinion from Deloitte and the county attorneys gave to us, is that the goal is to understand what our, for lack of a better way to describe it, and Mr. Bloomingdale corrected me, what our current capacity is and what we could transition. So the assets that we have that can actually transition. If they're going to do that, and if they don't, we can try to claw back our own money and say, you didn't do it right. I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish here, other than trying to save $12,000 because we don't like Pavandra. I'm not sure I get it. Here's what I'm getting at. In two months, I think we're going to have, I hope, an analysis of what existing assets are there, and what type of extra capacity we'd actually have to build, and whether we could actually do it. According to federal law, whether we can actually do it. So if we're not provided with that type of information, then we slam the brakes on and go, look, and this isn't sufficient. I don't have what I need. I can go down, I can go down a litany of things that I would want to see. Commissioner Morgan just pointed one out, that there's certain space over there. Is it functional? Can we actually use it? I mean, you could probably get five different answers. Director Myers, all kinds of other people can march in here and say, no, you can't for this reason. Or, yeah, that's a possibility. We haven't even started that yet. I don't know, I've said it three times, I'm going to say it again. I don't know what we're doing. We can have everybody come up here and give us your opinions. The question is, if we narrow this focus, what's our goal? What's our objective? We, as a board, decided that we were going to break this thing out, and we were going to give corrections the capacity they need to do the job that they need. The question is, is it going to meet the federal guidelines? And if we get an architectural decision that says, no, well, you know, we didn't look at all of this existing asset, we can go, well, you better. And by the way, after this diatribe, if they don't know now that that's going to have to be the case, then they're not listening. So Jeff, weigh in if you want. I don't know where this is going, but we can slam the brakes on this thing and pull it off consent, but I don't, I'm not sure I see why, is my point.
Commissioners, I can answer that question. So the federal regulations require that the board look at two other alternatives when doing this proposed capital improvement project. Arguably, the board has done that by looking at either building a one facility, combined facility, Mental Health Corrections and Mental Health Committee, Mental Health, to the west of the facility, or building two separate facilities as a separate option, and then you arriving at just building the correction facility. However, to be safe and to exercise sufficient caution, I believe it was in the best interest of the county that we do move forward and spend the $12,000 to take a look at another option, which is renovation of the facility. I think that would really provide you an extra layer of safety. You know, informally, it doesn't seem to be feasible, but Pavandra is going to do that study. It should take a few weeks, and then we'll just see what, how it comes out.
Okay, thank you. No other lights from commissioners? Is there anyone in the chamber, before I go to Zoom, wishing to speak on this item? Again, it's the Consent Agenda Item B.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Hal Dob. My address is 314 North 97th Court here in Omaha, Nebraska. I want to thank you for consideration today of this Consent Agenda item. of this consent agenda item. I think it complements the earlier decision you all made to separate or divide the potential ARPA funding and to take a look at it in two ways, two functional uses of those funds, which I want to also support. I'm not sure, when I read the supporting data for this consent item, that the objective you seek is going to be met by the words on the page that says how the money is to be spent for that objective. Not so much the way Commissioner Friend described it, to try to hit the nail on the head. ARPA, you had some really good information a couple of months ago from my distinguished friend, an attorney, Ed Fogarty, who is a real expert, not only in mental health, having served many years, all of us, on the mental health board, as you know, but also in terms of regulatory interpretation. And it was to say simply, as Mr. Bloom just did, that there have to be two alternatives, at least run to ground financially, to qualify for the use of those funds under the guidelines, the ARPA guidelines, for this particular funding stream. So I hope that this $12,000 is spent to look at running to ground for your use and comparative assessment, alternative reconstruction, rehabilitation, reuse, adaptive reuse, other space assessment that can meet the original written objective of your application, of the county's application. That original application has some problems, I think. And I don't know that $12,000 of financial assessment in two weeks of time is going to get to the root of that. But I hope that that's the intent of this consent item, that you get information about all the other options and the comparative costs of those options. The purpose is to stretch the ARPA dollars just as far as you can, as far as we can, to get as much leverage out of that $50,000 or however much it is in both categories, the jail itself and then the other potential facilities, wherever they may be located, downtown or on Levinworth Street. And I think that you'll get there. But I'm not sure $12,000 is enough, and I'm not sure two weeks is enough. This is a pretty serious undertaking. And if, in fact, it's true that this assessment's been done before, then why haven't we seen it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak?
Ed Fogarty, 521 North 38th Street. I'm here to talk about ARPA and the danger of clawback. The danger of clawback comes from the Treasury Department or the federal inspector, who would look at this independently. And you better explain it well and in detail. The problem with this process is that when the staff of the county looked into it, they didn't even look at ARPA. So I'm going to give you a quick review of ARPA. The Mental Health, Behavioral Health, Substance Abuse Disorder Sections total 13, from 2701 to 2713. Not one of them expressly says you can go build anything on capital improvements. And that includes renovations. Those are capital improvements. So you're right away, headlong in, talking to a bunch of architects and engineers, and what are you going to come up with? Build, build, build. I'm not going to blame Mr. Bloomingdale. That's the way, that's the way the bureaucrats get projects online. ARPA 2706 specifically delineates what counties and municipalities ought to do. And that's kind of be the coordinator of all the various outfits in town to get service out to the people, to enhance and strengthen the mental health labor force and all sorts of things like that. But they don't ever say, go build stuff. The regulations, I've given this quote before, 31 CFR 356, sub B, sub four, three little i's, specifically says, capital expenditures, the proposed use must test the capital expenditures with at least two alternatives and explain why the proposal plan is superior. And you've only got, under this Pavanda thing, take a look at that lump that came before us until we started examining this closely. Hey, that's not, that's kind of the project. And we are now, thanks to Commissioner Morgan, down to talk about the jail. So let's talk about two alternatives on the jail. One is the Kavanaugh one, all renovation. Deloitte warns you that any money spent for capital improvements on a jail are suspect, heavily suspect, to clawback, clawback by the government. That notice came really late, in the last month or so. They were paid 1.8 million dollars going off on what somebody put in the idea we had to build, build, build. Nobody has given you the risk benefit that is essential for every lawyer with a client. Had I been your lawyer, I'd have given you some warnings early because I've sued governments. Risk benefit of clawback at your initial plan and spending all 58 million, all on building, I'd say to an inspector or the treasury, somewhere in excess of 75% risk of clawback, of all of it, if it had gone headlong. Now, I even have problems with Kavanaugh, 40%. Because I view rehab of a building in the context of mental health, not a good one. Not completely risk-free. So I'm going to give you the four, that's your alternative one for Pavanda. Alternative two, and this is a generic one from Fogarty. Take a million dollars free capital expenditure that they say, well, we won't even ask any questions. Do something with the jail to create an environment where you can go get the biggest bang for your buck. That's substance abuse. Create a clinic there. Take 5, 10 million of it and create a real good staff for it. Bring in the experts from places like Community Alliance or Stevens Center. And finally, when you go to assess this, what experts are you going to be talking to? You ought to talk to mental health experts.
Time. Thank you, Mr. Fogarty.
Like your own staff over there.
Thank you. Next?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. Déjà vu all over again. You know, the concept of we the people applies on a local government level as well as a federal. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh, for pulling this off the consent agenda so people could hear more about it. We don't have time usually to read all the documents behind it. And consent agendas are a way to avoid the public knowing what you're doing. But occasionally, the citizens do raise their back and say, stop, we want to know more. Town hall meetings sometimes don't cut the mustard because you really don't have to answer specific questions if you don't want to. As the same applies here. You can choose to answer them, but you don't have to. On advice of legal counsel, of course. Now, I want to ask some questions that need to be raised and answered for the citizens. Let's go back to the similar situation five, six years ago with the Douglas County Youth Center thing. It got taken out of the hands of the people. Long discussions about the property we already own out there on 42nd and Center Street. Why not use it? Why pay for a lot of studies for somewhere else? We have Mr. Morgan, who's a real estate professional. He should know what's available, what isn't, and why you should or shouldn't use that. I'd like to hear about it. I don't think that was addressed at a town hall meeting. I didn't make it. I stopped going to those because usually the answers didn't come. But how many, and across the street from the existing youth center out there, who owns that property of the old mall? It's mostly social service agencies and 501(c)(3). So I suspect that the taxpayers kind of own that because we support the 501(c)s. And all these people have, what are they called? Status as stakeholders, quote-quote stakeholders, where citizens don't, apparently. That needs to get changed. You work for us, we don't work for you. That type of thing. So please discuss today with the presenter or whoever, why those facilities at 42nd Center cannot be used for a hell of a lot less money and more effectively than running around downtown to what's not available? Well, stop looking then. He says that there's probably no space available. We blew up a lot of buildings down there, didn't we? Which would have made nice facilities. But see here again, because you don't listen to the citizens that you work for, you don't necessarily come up with the best ideas. Thank you to Mr. Friend also. Because they do question things. But there are only two out of seven. There's seven against me, seven against citizens. That's kind of unfair. But we would not hear about this if it were not for Mr. Kavanaugh. And I want to close by saying, please pay attention to other counties in the area because citizens are really getting their backs up now. And you will be hearing from different counties. And hopefully, we will have a four-county area presentation right here in this building. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Larry. Any other citizens in the chamber wishing to speak on consent agenda item B?
Nicole Leclair, representing our Omaha. I was listening on the way in to Patrick Bloomingdale say that's not a formal study. After a year, I mean, is that when we get the formal study? Takes a year? We don't blame Alpavandra. I'm sure he's a great architect. We blame those of you who are choosing to do it this way. I look over at the fiasco albatross around Omaha's neck because some of you made that choice of a building that is not inhabited, that is inefficient right now. And you're building all over town to try to make sense that we don't have enough room over there. And you're doing it again. So 62,000 has been already on Alpavandra, not a formal study yet. And beginning of April, now we're getting up to 74,000. The Chin study was 189,000 that you didn't pay attention to. And we wouldn't have this if you had. And still, I don't think the money's being spent on what's best for people with mental health issues. Lots of money at studies for construction, but not for the people. In the resolution today, the word desirous is used. Wow, what a word. I don't see, most of the people I talked to in Douglas County, it says Douglas County is desirous of this. They don't even know about it. Stop and try to listen to the people. Thank you.
Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak on consent agenda item B? If not, I will move to the Zoom. Louise?
Thank you. Speaking on consent agenda B?
Yes.
Well, I think you said it best. Chairperson, there's no clawback. There's no risk of clawback, however you spend your money, because CARES Act and the ARPA Act are both designed as stimulus. That's its basic function. So at the beginning, it was just about, how do we inject money into the economy? And so it was called CARES Act, and then it was called ARPA Act. However, Deloitte did need a boogeyman. Deloitte and Touche did need a boogeyman, and you guys gave them the federal auditor. So now, we get bogged down on these discussions that, oh, if you do this, if you do that, is the auditor going to tell Douglas County to give back your money? I don't believe so. On the discussion, I will talk about the discussion. But I support the resolution to ask Pavanda to do more services because they were qualified in the original RFP on the correctional services. And they're also doing public engagement. I don't know if there's the public engagement clause in their proposal. But they're, relative to other architects, they want to do public engagement. So I think they're a good service provider. And the last thing on this discussion that I want to put forth is the question about how you spend the 50 million. It's not, I don't think you guys asked, what facilities do we build? The question was, who do you serve? Which population do you serve? And on that point, I think you guys have plenty of proposals. I consider them formal proposals on who the county is going to serve with the $50 million put forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom on item B? If not, we, Commissioner Boyle, you wanted item J?
Yeah, I'm just looking at item J. It's a bid acceptance for JK Medical Staffing to provide temporary clerical staffing for Douglas County Health Department in the amount of $100,000. And I just had a question as to what the services are for. That just seems like a large amount for temporary staffing.
Eric Carlson, Douglas County Purchasing Director. This particular bid was put on behalf of the Health Department for vacant positions clerical. So basically, it's generally for the clinics. If you look at the backup documentation that's showing. And the reason why it's estimated is because, again, they show an hourly rate. And so it'll only be billed, obviously, if we fill any of those vacant positions through this firm. But again, this was the only bidder that provided a response to this bid. And it did meet the specifications of the Health Department. I know Jerry's here. If you have any specific questions to their needs for this. But my understanding is these are all clerical positions. Just to clarify, there aren't any sort of medical staffing. But they're within the Health Department clinic.
Yeah, that was really my question, is that clerical staffing is something that I know that just, it's difficult to get staffing anytime, anywhere now. So are there goals to fill them with permanent positions as far as we know?
Jerry, I don't know if you can come down and speak to that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Geraldine McKay. And I'm the Budget and Finance Officer or Manager for Douglas County Health Department. What this is, is to fill gaps in between filling the permanent positions. We have money budgeted for temporary staff to do special mailings or data entry, a one-time deal. But we also have to set aside funds for if we have open positions that we're waiting, you know, we're going through the hiring process. We still need people to kind of cover the phones, enter data as we go so that we don't get bogged down and be, you know, a month or two behind in the work.
Okay, all right. That answers my question. Great, thank you.
All right. No other questions on item J? I just had a question if someone could respond from the sheriff's office about the SROs and why there's a difference in cost for item C versus item D? If they're all doing the same thing? And I apologize not getting to you before this. I just noticed it.
Morning. Chief Ren, Chief of Admin, Douglas County Sheriff. I don't have the item in front of me.
So Elkhorn, Grandview, North Ridge Middle School, Granvu Middle School, Elkhorn Ridge Middle and Valley View Middle are at 50,000 plus, 51,000 plus, 53,000 plus for that contract? Then, when you go to DC West High School, it's 60,000 plus, 62,000 plus, 64,000 plus. So I just wondered why there was a variance in cost if the SROs do the same thing?
Yeah, I didn't prepare either of those documents, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that. It
It, uh, uh, it could potentially be that, uh, if the length of the contracts are the same.
Yeah, they're both three years.
Uh, I would recommend we pull that off and look at it again then.
Okay, all right. Not gonna mess up timing on anything if we do that?
I think if we...
Because it wouldn't be for the next school year anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I, without having prepared the documents, I don't, I don't know. And there very well may be a good reason for it. And Captain Ali isn't here to speak to that, so.
Okay, thanks. Sorry again for not getting to you beforehand. Um, so we have any other discussion items for the consent? So consent items A through O minus C and D. Is there a motion to approve? Or there was, sorry. Please vote.
Yeah, uh, just, I assume Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Morgan are fine with... Okay. And then I just need to update this real quick and then I'll let you know when I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll go to citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Good morning.
David Begley, forty-sixth and South Ninety-sixth Street. Uh, I hope that we would all agree that there is no place like Nebraska. I think we can all agree on that. I, I would hope we could agree on the fact that there's no place for the Orwellian rewriting of history in Nebraska. I spoke to you last meeting about the inaccurate plaque there on the Douglas County Courthouse lawn. And, um, on reflecting about this, I thought that Omaha has been remarkably blessed by very good mayors. I see former Mayor Dobbs is here today. He was a good mayor. PJ Morgan was a good mayor. Mike Boyle, Maureen Boyle's late father, was a good mayor. Our most recent mayors, Democrat Mike Fahey, Republican Gene Stothard, very good. And the one who really started it, at least in my mind, was Gene Leahy. And we have the Gene Leahy Mall. Uh, he was a Democrat. Republican Gene Stothard improved it. And I think what underlies, well, and there was one exception. When I was a kid, and actually he lived in my neighborhood, it was James Dwork, who was indicted for bribery, but was acquitted. So what has been a, a base level of the excellence of Omaha's mayors is that there has not been any corruption and that reflects on the rule of law. And I think it all goes back to Mayor Ed Smith, who, when the mob, the crazy mob with murder in their eyes, wanted to remove Will Brown from the Douglas County Jail, which was then on the top of the courthouse, he stood them down. And he said, no, I will not give up the man. I'm going to enforce the law even with my own life. Well, surprise, the mob really did have an intent to murder him. They captured him, dragged him down to Sixteenth and Harney and tried to hang him. Luckily, a citizen rescued him from the mob, but, you know, still he almost died. So I, I, what I've drafted here, conveniently, I've drafted a resolution for your approval today, if you're so inclined or at a later date, that the rotunda of the Douglas County Courthouse be named in honor of former Mayor Ed Smith. And this is what I wrote. On September twenty-eighth, nineteen nineteen, Omaha Mayor Ed Smith bravely resisted the efforts of a mob who wanted to capture and lynch Will Brown, who was then a prisoner in the jail, but was presumed innocent. Mayor Ed Smith told the lawless mob, no, I will not give up the man. I'm going to enforce the law even with my own life. The mob kidnapped Mayor Ed Smith and attempted to lynch him from the traffic signal tower at Sixteenth and Harney Street. A citizen rescued the mayor, but he nearly died from his injuries. This rotunda is named in honor of Omaha Mayor Ed Smith for his bravery and his commitment to the rule of law. And, you know, that, that bravery was really quite significant. I, I don't know if I could face down a bunch of drunken Irishmen, but that's probably who the mob was, who were gonna try to murder me. So I, I really think that, you know, you can correct this error with that, that inaccurate plaque there on the courthouse and really say, Douglas County, we are committed to the rule of law in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizen comments about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Thank you, sir. That needed to be said. Something else that to me needs to be said, but expanded upon is the people's ability to address their government and change their government when it is no longer suffice to their needs. The recent elections in twenty-twenty-two and all the hullabaloo since then, it's not necessarily hullabaloo. It's not necessary fake information. There are quite a few counties where there are quite a few presentations being made on how the election maybe was stolen because computers and the internet can be manipulated. Fact. Every person I've talked to that is in IT admits that. And I used to do some of that. It's only as good as the person that puts it in. Now I got artificial intelligence. But I sent you two emails before today that I wanted to include, but just in case, I'll present them in writing. And I might add that when I go back to check the record, all the record says is that, oh, Larry Store spoke. Now, do I have to request public documents to find out if you actually put it in the record or not? My comments? Did his comments get in? Probably not. But here's the thing. We have a person in Nebraska who is a stakeholder, who's got skin in the game because he ran for Secretary of State and he ran for governor on a write-in ballot, write-in candidate. He has been requesting lots of information in public records and he's been denied all the way along. Just as we, the people, have been denied by our representatives, such as yourselves, to even look at the matter. Because some expert somewhere said, oh, our elections are secure. We're not even going to debate it. We're not going to look at it. We're not going to investigate it because there is no fact, no truth. Excuse me. We're telling you again today, and you're gonna hear from the other counties, that there is some truth to it. And we, the people, want an investigation and an honest, transparent discussion. And I am again calling for, at the mic this time, a four-county wide meeting in these chambers where we are the presenter. The Secretary of State, the Attorney General, the County Attorney are the opponents. We would like the sheriff to be on our side also as the presenters or proponents. For the fact is, we can get it, we can come back a second time that day. Whereas the perpetrators, the, the opponents can only speak once unless you invite them to speak again. The way it works in Omaha. Quite similar here, mostly in the city council, but quite similar here. And that's why I'm calling for it that way. Now, I'm not the only person doing this. They're doing this at other counties right now. So let's save some money. You have interlocal agreements about other things. Let's have an interlocal agreement for this. But not for them as the proponents, because they are the accused here. There's some information in here I'm not gonna read because you won't let me anyway. From Robert J. Borer. He is the only person speaking to the truth of the matter.
One minute.
And he has skin in the game. And he's been refused. And we, the people, are sick and tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Ed Fogarty, five twenty-one North Thirty-Eight Street. I want to talk about the juvenile jail building. I want to, uh, stress that that is a magnificent building. It's a good complement to the wonderful courthouse, the one that I first walked into in nineteen seventy-sixty-nine as a practicing lawyer. And it's made up of about, oh, eight gorgeous courts. And, uh, eight judges with adequate staff. Public defender, the legendary Adolf Wolf and his three assistants that ran the whole public defender. And over Pinky Knoll's office, where with about ten assistants, he ran the whole Douglas County. Now, that courthouse changed a lot. You have a beautiful building, well-designed. I think you call it the Hall of Justice. But in it, you do have one bad aspect. A juvenile jail that will never, and as far as I, maybe I have a black view of mankind, but you're never gonna reduce the juvenile detainees to fifty workable people. So what I would think you might think about doing is reaffirm that beautiful building's dedication to justice. Uh, and the Navy, when a ship is no longer useful, we mothball it. Mothball the juvenile court thing for a while and preserve that building to expand public defenders, county attorneys, judges. There'll be more judges. There weren't any judges when I started. Now there's so many and they always rule again me. But that's fine. That's their job. And, uh, dedicate that building to that on a strategic rethinking of what that magnificent building ought to be. And I'll just throw in one little thing. You know those two stories up there? Uh, those two floors up there for juvenile justice? I would love to see the sheriff, the warden, the professional people, hands-on medic psychiatric care people, think about at least an interim use for it. I think it's gonna be years before maybe the judges have to take it over in courtrooms. But you're never going to see juveniles there. And, uh, maybe use a million dollars of that freebie, capital improvement money out of ARPA, and let those people design what I think is the most beautiful sort of help for jailbirds. Drug abuse, alcohol abuse is what's destroying in them. You only have them for less than a year under your jurisdiction. Get a pilot program put together by professionals, not architects. Architects come up with build, build, build. Do something like that. There's no hurry by, by way of that use of the jail uh, because you only have to commit your money by the end of twenty twenty-four. I, I'm throwing that out as, as an idea. I think just be flexible and don't despair that, uh, that beautiful justice center is a lost cause. It's a magnificent place to look forward to and to use well. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Nicole Leclair. Um, I'd like to speak about the Juvenile Justice Center. Um, and the question about why Brad Alexander and Mark LaFleur no longer come and present? Um, seems like they've been replaced with Dr. Abby Carbaugh. Um, but I really appreciated Mark LaFleur's and Brad Alexander's reports because I feel like they are with the kids and they know what's going on. Um, Dr. Dr. Abby Carbaugh often says, I don't know, or the reports are left on her desk. Um, that is not okay. Um, so far I hear about the home program. I don't know about other programs. And that does not seem to be working so well. Um, I'm very concerned about public safety as are, as is much of the public. Um, the home program does not protect the public. Um, there's lots of problems with that. Go upstairs to nine oh three meetings to find out how it's going. Um, so about the Juvenile Justice Center, a big point of building it was that we wanted it co-located or you wanted it co-located. It's not co-located. I'm not sure how many locations we are up to now. They seem to be all over town and much of those are not secure. And that is a concern. Another big point we heard about over and over was the handcuffs and shackles, how we couldn't have kids in those. Well, they're still gonna be in handcuffs. Um, there is no free parking for the families. We heard that there would be. Um, I think there's like a drive-up, pickup, short stay kind of situation. Green space on the roof, doesn't sound very safe. No windows. We often hear about trauma-informed. I don't know about you, but I like to see nature. I think that really helps me. Um, we did hear about things such as borrowed light. Um, interesting idea. So so far, five hundred thousand dollars was just committed at your last meeting for something that is not a program, but a service provider. And that is out of the five million promised from Sherwood Foundation. Um, only you've received two million and I believe only the five hundred thousand has been dedicated. Again, um, a service provider, not a program. Um, so I just encourage you to con- continue to ponder and pause. At twenty years of working on this, we've heard that the best you got is the home program where kids are re-assaulting people and their families, revictimizing. That's a problem.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Norma Leclair, Bellevue, Nebraska. Nice to be back. I've been watching you on Zoom and, um, I still have concerns. But I would like to thank Commissioner Garcia for recommending that fifty-two kids be observed for numbers at the current DCYC and that those numbers be that number before any move to the new kids' jail. I would also like to thank Brad Alexander for his excellent supervision for so many years at the current facility. I appreciated his frequent updates in the past that told us of the youth at DCYC and the problems being addressed. As a taxpayer, I would also appreciate the radio and TV stations telling us the new numbers at the DCYC whenever there is a new arrest, like the thirteen-year-old last night. This is a really hot topic for all of your taxpayers out there listening to see how these numbers are going to be controlled. I was relieved to hear that this young criminal will be in jail until his current court hearing in August. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Uh, Louise?
Louise?
Yes. And I have a friend here too. Um, I wanted to amend my comments from two weeks ago when I spoke about Creighton University. One second, please. I, I comment, I said that, uh, Creighton may do information collection. And, uh, that's a, probably not a true comment. They... And that's probably not a true comment. They do medical information collection. Before the pandemic, I was going to their science library. And when the pandemic struck, I wasn't able to go there because I was a, I was part of the public, was not a student. And what the students do at the science library, and I forgot about this, it's been a while, is that they are taught how to do queries in the various information hubs that the medical industry benefits from. And so that, I knew there was something there, but I couldn't remember that they literally do medical information collection. Another thing is if I can share my screen, am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
I don't know how to do that. Can Sharon, can you share my screen?
No, we can't do it from this end.
Okay, give me a sec then. I don't see an option.
Can you just read us what you're trying to show us?
Okay. It's the Mental Health Facility Study, Phase Two. And there's a concept plan for a new combined mental health facility. So I wanted to remind everyone in the room and watching that you chose not to do a combined mental health facility. And that was an option. Somebody referenced it earlier. Would it cost around fifty-two to fifty-eight million dollars plus site cost? And your architect wasn't aware of a space or a location that you can use. So you did not, the board decided not to go with the new combined, a new combined mental health facility. And on top of that, this would be, this facility would have been heavily stigmatized because you're mixing populations, even though I'm sure they would have been partitioned. And it doesn't serve the corrections, having to move their inmates who have mental health issues from the downtown location to a different location. And at the time of this committee hearings, I supported that you build a correctional addition and then the remaining amount that you would put into services for mental health facilities. And I have to say, I think I'm wrong about that. I was wrong that that would be effective. Because now I've come to find out that mental health services provided by private institutions and nonprofits
One minute.
Need support. And that, and it's beyond financial support. It's beyond capacity building. They need to be able to go back to the basics, go back to formula. So I think if you would have, if you put the remaining amount of money from the fifty million dollars after you spend on adding in addition to corrections and sending that money to services, it would be, it wouldn't have the efficacy that it would have if the county directly guides those services and how that money is used. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Anyone else on Zoom? Larry, you already spoke. Anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? All right, with that, we will move to presentations.
Excuse me.
Yes, Luis.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Larry. Luis.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ford Brown.
I'm sorry.
Ford Momarts Brown.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm not be, I'm not able to be there today. I'd have Luis show you why I'm not able to be there today. On the twenty-eighth, I was hit by a car crossing Farnham at Thirteenth Street. Can you show them?
Oh. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I broke my pelvis and had a brain bleed. And I'm still in the trauma center of the ICU at UNMC. I'm due to be moved out sometime later today to rehab, not to my home. But I still wanted to make a few remarks about the mental health issue. It's taking me time to get recall all that I was going to talk to you about. But I did want to say that I agree with His Honor Haldab that we need to get the most cost-effective use out of the money available. And I still think the most cost-effective is to have an adjacent use for the corrections and the wider community facilities, provided it can be securely linked. And I realize that there are problems with that. But from the background I've recently been through and been sharing with you, I am very concerned about that. But I, I think it's important, but I also think it's very important that the community have recourse to mental health treatment and therapy and such. And I would really like to encourage you to do more in that direction and see what can be done for the wider community, not just convicts. Because innocent people need help in that area, too, so that they don't wind up getting thrown into situations like I was. And that's mostly what I had wanted to say. But also, if you had any questions about what I presented before or what I'm saying now, I'm more than happy to answer those. And my address again is fifteen eleven Farnham when I'm in residence. Although I will be moving to, I believe it's, thank you very much for providing it, Douglas County Rehab. But are there any questions that you have or any points of clarification? I guess there isn't. When I am able to recollect, recollect more of my memory, I will probably be back to talk to any of you. But thanks for the county assistance you've been providing so far and for taking your time to listen to me.
Thank you and get better.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on Zoom? Okay, we will move to a presentation we have. It is Mr. John Cannon, our Nebraska Association of County Officials Executive Director. Good morning, John.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Mary Ann Sed, I'm John Cannon. I'm the Executive Director of the Nebraska Association of County Officials, one three three five H Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I want to mention, and I want to stress that it is your Association of County Officials. That nice building I get to work in every day that belongs to you. One of the things that we're very, very proud of is the fact that anytime that there are folks from any county in the state that are in town meeting with a senator or just need a place to attend to business, we make that available free charge to any county official in the state. And that's something that we're, we're going to continue doing as long as I can, as long as we're able. But I did want to stress that part. I view my role as the Executive Director of NACO as being to connect you all with the resources that you need to do your jobs in a more efficient manner. And so I'm here to visit with you about some of the things that we have at NACO. First, I'll talk about some of the events that we have coming up. The first one actually is not a Nebraska Association of County Officials event. It's the National Association of Counties. They have their annual conference coming up July twenty-one through twenty-four in Austin, Texas. And I would certainly encourage as many of you to attend that as you can. There's an awful lot of business that gets tended to. Very actionable information that is presented to county commissioners, county officials of all stripes from across the country. And it's, I know a number of you have attended that in the past, and it's a really good event. And the National Association does a terrific job. And in fact, they're not paying me to be here, but I will put in a brief plug for the National Association of Counties. I noticed that you guys were talking earlier about your ARPA funds and how to spend them. And one thing I want to mention about ARPA is that is something that we'll probably never, ever see again. We've never, certainly never seen before. And that is a direct allocation of funds to counties. And that is primarily because of the work that the National Association of Counties had done. When the CARES Act came out, the rule was that money was going to be, it was going to go out the door to the states. The states were supposed to devolve that down to the local level with quote-unquote "no strings attached." Well, as I'm sure you know, because you referenced the Deloitte and Touche auditing firm earlier, there were some strings attached. And that's not a criticism of our former governor, Pete Ricketts. Every governor in the country did the same thing, and it's understandable. I mean, that's a large sum of money. They want to make sure there's some accountability that's going on there. The National Association said that wasn't the intention of this. We wanted this money to go directly to our counties. And so they worked very, very closely with both the Trump administration, the Biden administration, both houses of Congress, both parties in Congress, and the Treasury Department to make that direct allocation of funds available to the counties. I will note that Douglas County received a hundred and ten, almost a hundred and eleven million dollars in ARPA funds from the federal government. If you took your ten thousand three hundred and forty-two-dollar annual dues to the National Association of Counties, that would pay for ten thousand seven hundred and thirty years of membership in NACO. I think that's a pretty darn good return on your investment. But that all aside, I will also note that we have had three National Association Presidents that have come from Douglas County. Commissioner Dan Lynch, Commissioner Chris Rogers, Commissioner Mary Ann Borgeson. Something that we're very proud of at our Nebraska Association of Counties. And we certainly appreciate that partnership that we have with the National Association. The next event I want to talk about is the Assessors Workshop. That'll be August twenty-one through twenty-four in Kearney. Certainly, Mr. Pfeffer is going to be attending, as well as other staff from the Douglas County Assessors Office. Again, a lot of good information that we put out there. Most of that educational material is provided by the Property Tax Administrator. She does a terrific job with that. We also have the Nebraska Association's Legislative Conference on Thursday, October twelfth, in West Point. And so if you, any of you have ever said, "There ought to be a law," and I know that I've heard many of you say that, actually, this is your opportunity to present something to the NACO Board for something that we could take as legislation into the next session. And I'll talk about legislation in just a little bit. If you have something in mind, I would encourage you to either go to your Southeast District Representative, who's Mark Shane Rock, or your Southeast District Officer, who would be Marvin Cohode from Saline County, and bring that sort of information forward so that we can at least put it into a form that the NACO Board can act on. Again, it is your opportunity to say, you know, we have a particular view of how the laws of the state are administered as they relate to counties. And those are ideas that we certainly would like to have brought forward at our legislative conference. And then last but not least, we have our NACO Annual Conference, which will be December thirteen through fifteen in Kearney. We have a lot of great speakers lined up, a lot of education as well. And again, when I talk about the resources that we provide, a large part of that is going to be education. And so just a lot of actionable information that you're able to bring back to your county. One thing I would like to talk about a little bit is the three- or five-year strategic plan that NACO had done when I first became the Executive Director a couple of years ago. I looked at it, I said, "Hey, look, I'm new to this. I'd been understudying under Larry Dix for a while, and that was a great opportunity, but I'm still new to the whole thing." I said, "NACO Board, I would like to undertake a study, see what sorts of things we should be doing that we aren't, things we could be doing better, things that we should stop doing that we are." And we did a study for about six months. We looked at a lot of things like cybersecurity, mass appraisal, GIS, citizen-centric websites, which really focused more on the software company that NACO owns, which therefore means the county's own. But there are a few other things as well, as far as what NACO does as well. And a lot of that really had to do with the educational offerings that we're doing. And if you've looked at our agendas for the annual conference, you'll notice that there's a lot more stuff. And I've actually had complaints from people that three years ago said, "You guys don't have enough for me." They said, "My gosh, you have too much." So that's certainly something that we really focused on as part of that study. When we got done with that study, you know, we said, "Well, all right, Board, please prioritize this all for us." And the Board said, "Yes." And I said, "That's not really prioritizing." And what they said, what one of the Board members said was, "Well, we're sure that between you and Candace, you'll be able to knock this stuff out in your spare time." Everyone had a great chuckle at that. And I said, "Look, if you would like us to be all things to all people, we can certainly try. But here's the thing, while we will always have to be in Lincoln because of the giant building that's catty-corner from our office, we can no longer afford to just be in Lincoln anymore." And if you look at the state of Nebraska, and you drew a line straight down the center of it, and you said, "Where is the population of county officials?" As with most people, they would say that the population of Nebraska is on the eastern end of the state. But when it comes to county officials, we got ninety-three of them. They're all across the state. And roughly half of them live west of Kearney, roughly half live east of Kearney. And so what we said was, if we want to project our resources in a more efficient manner for the entirety of the state, we cannot just be in Lincoln anymore. We probably would need to look at a different location as well. And so if you think of the state as a giant tent, one of the tent poles being in Lincoln, we all know it's Omaha. I know, I get that. But one of the other tent poles should reasonably be somewhere around Ogalala. And the Board said, "Yes," without even batting an eye. We went and purchased some land. We had a groundbreaking, actually, just over a month ago. We will be opening an office building in the western part of the state. What that means for Douglas County and for people that live east of Kearney is the resources that we have in Lincoln, we'll be able to project them more efficiently in the eastern half of the state. We were going to have staff out in the western part, what we're referring to as NACO West. I think that it's going to be a good thing for us as an association, for us as counties, I think really for us as a state. So we're very excited about that. We're looking forward to it. And hopefully, we'll be opening that by December of next year. So I noticed that we weren't able to lure you guys out to the groundbreaking. Hopefully, we can have you out for the ribbon-cutting next year. As part of that, one of the things that we had done, as I mentioned, we have a software company that you own. It's called MIPS, Multi-County Information and Programming Services. And what we do is we provide solutions for assessor clerk treasurer. We have some things for the register of deeds office, clerks to district court, sheriff's office. We have a few programs for them. And while I know that Douglas County doesn't make use of those resources, and for good reason. I mean, we started off as a very small company that kind of, through the inkblot strategy, started growing across the state. One of the things that we have as a goal is to be able to serve, not, we don't have to get all the counties. One of our programmers says, "It's like Pokemon. You got to catch them all." We want to be in a position where we can serve every county. And so if there's ever a need for Douglas County, we want to be able to fill that need as it comes up. So those are things that we're very excited about. I did mention I want to talk about legislation. This last legislative session, in a word, was weird. Fifty-two bills passed. The first bill that was signed by the governor was after day fifty-four, I believe. And what actually happened is that there were probably about two hundred and ninety bills that got stuffed into those fifty-two bills. They were almost like lifeboats, really, in a sense. The good news is, is that there are a lot of bad bills that were, that we were opposed to as an association that just got halted as a result of everything that went on with the filibuster that went on. I'm sure you all have heard about that. But there are a few bills I wanted to talk about in particular. The first one was LB two forty-three. That's a property tax bill. It has some things that it talks about with Turk. They're going to add another commissioner. It adds some more money to the refundable income tax credit, which you can go back and forth as to whether or not that's the best bang for our buck. They have a cap on the amount of school levies. And one thing I want to mention, as far as that's concerned, is that when you put a cap on the levy for one political subdivisions, it becomes a lot easier to do it for other ones. And so keep an eye on those sorts of things, and I'll get to what you can do here in just a second. And also, and the other thing it's going to do is it's going to move community colleges out of property taxes eventually, within a couple of years. And it's going to move them to be funded almost entirely by the state. There is a provision that if, if the community colleges are not funded according to a formula that's set in law, then the community colleges will have, they will retain their levying authority through the property tax. But again, statewide, community colleges levy approximately ten percent of all the property taxes across the state. So that's going to be a significant savings for most of our Nebraska property taxpayers. LB seven two seven was another bill. It has to do with the postcard. The green postcard for you, for every other county in Nebraska. It was a pink postcard. Enough said about the postcards. There was some stuff that had to do with reporting for the inheritance tax. And I know from your perspective, that is something that is a sensitive issue. And I'll, and I'd like to talk about that a little bit further in just a moment. And then there is an amendment as to how we do treasurer's deeds and tax sales within the state. As you know, there was a court case at the United States Supreme Court. That was Tyler versus Hennepin County, Minnesota. And that basically changes the way that we're going to be able to do tax sales for people that are delinquent on their taxes. And then there was another provision about special value. In effect, if a city annexes agricultural land, then it does not lose its ability to be agricultural land or classified as agricultural land. And in fact, it can still And in fact, it can still receive special valuation, which is not 75% of its market value, it's 75% of its special value. So it's uninfluenced value. That is, it is kind of a big deal. It's a little bit of a shift from how we've always conceived of special value. And so it's certainly something I wanted to bring up with you all. LB 514 was voter ID. As you all know, last year we passed a constitutional amendment that said that we were going to require voter ID for all future elections. And there were two versions of that bill that was going to implement that. One of them was going to be jam-packed with a whole bunch of stuff that was not necessarily related to voter ID but was related to elections. The bill that Senator Brewer, who was the Chair of the Government Committee, had settled on was something that was going to be what he referred to as a skinny voter ID bill and it was just voter ID. That is the bill that ended up prevailing and that's the bill that ended up passing. And then the last bill I wanted to mention is LB 77, which is, as Senator Brewer referred to it, it was constitutional concealed carry. What this allows is that for anyone to have concealed carry of a weapon without a permit, you guys are probably as, as aware of, of the controversies surrounding that as I am. One of the things I can say is that law enforcement generally said, you know, now we have to treat, just as a, for instance, we have to treat any traffic stop as if someone might be, might be carrying. And so it does create a little bit of an issue as far as, as far as law enforcement is concerned. But generally speaking, the county stayed out of that. That was one of those things, it's like a third rail, don't want to touch it if you can help it. But when I, when I mentioned legislation, I really, I'm here to ask for your help. And we need to be engaged with our senators. And I, I might be the most charming person in the world, spoiler alert, I am not. But what we need is for you to be engaged with your senators. And the reason I say that is because every time I pull a senator off the floor out into the rotunda, when they start out the conversation by saying, "John, I've spoken with my county commissioner, I've spoken with my county assessor, I've spoken with my county treasurer, I've spoken to whomever at the county," I know that conversation's going to go really, really well. And so it's your engagement that, that is going to make the, the biggest impact really, frankly. One thing I will mention is that statewide, in the last four years, the last two election cycles, which have accounted for every county office that there is, Nebraska county officials have received 4.2 million votes. Now, I know that we have the same people voting for Assessor, that vote for Clerk, that vote for Treasurer, but the point is, we have the government that is closest to its people. And I think that that is something that you should not forget. And we have the votes. The people are telling us what they want to do in each of the offices that we have. We are literal boots on the ground. And so when we talk to our senators, our voters are their voters and they darn well better remember that. And so, and that's not meant in a threatening manner and, and please don't mention the whole 4.2 million votes thing, they might consider that rude. But that is the underlying fact of the situation, that we are the government that is closest to its people. And I think that it is important that we take that, that attitude with us into those conversations we have with our state senators. So I will note, and you guys know this already, that 15 of the senators, the 49 senators in our legislature have at least a piece of Douglas County. Senator Walls is in, mostly in Dodge County, but she has a piece that comes into Douglas. And then 14 other counties that are entirely, or 14 other senators that are entirely within Douglas County. I can tell you that inheritance tax was and will continue to be an issue going forward as far as our legislature is concerned. Our governor has mentioned in public multiple times that he wants to get rid of the inheritance tax. And, and I've talked to him, I mean, actually, I pass by the mansion every day on my way into the Capitol. And he's caught me a few times. He says, "John, we need to talk about the inheritance tax." I said, and I've said, "Governor, there's a path as long as we get to revenue replacement." And he hasn't wanted to touch that one yet, but he's gonna have to, I think, if, if we're going to have an accommodation there. And so when you visit with your state senators, talk to them about the inheritance tax. And, and the, the merits of an inheritance tax, whether it's a good tax or a bad tax or whatever, that's all well and good. However, what it means to Douglas County, you guys know better than I do. I think it's something like $12 million in your, out of your budget. That's a pretty big number. And frankly, if people take $12 million away and you only have one avenue to replace that, and that's through the property tax, which people claim to hate. So for what it's worth, we commissioned a poll at the beginning of this session. We interviewed 500 Nebraska voters, likely Nebraska voters. We had a, a pretty representative mix of Republican, Democrat, Independent. And we asked a number of questions. The, the questions that we asked though, that were, I, I think important to remember, the first set was, "Would you like to get rid of the inheritance tax?" Everyone raises their hand and says, "Yes." "Would you like to get rid of the property tax?" Everyone raises their hand and says, "Yes." "Would you like to get rid of the sales tax?" Guess what? Same answer. "Would you like to get rid of the income tax?" Point is, in a vacuum, people are going to want to get rid of any tax that there is, right? So we asked some questions a little bit different way. We said, "If we got rid of the inheritance tax, but your property taxes went up, would you be, would you be in favor of that?" Eighty percent of our respondents said, "No." Well, that's interesting. We asked the question another way. We said, "If we got rid of the inheritance tax, your property taxes stayed the same, but you received fewer services and goods from your county government, would you be in favor of that?" Again, 80% of Nebraskans, likely Nebraska voters, said, "Don't do that." Right? So again, you can, we can talk about whether the inheritance tax is a good tax or a bad tax all we want. What I'm telling you though, is that what it means for the bottom line is something that Nebraska voters care very much about. Eighty percent is, is, that's a real number, right? Bring that information forward when you visit with your state senators. That is something that they need to be aware of because frankly, unless there is revenue replacement, and in my opinion, revenue replacement that's written into the Constitution, because the future legislature can just go ahead and change that, right? Unless you have revenue replacement, this whole notion about taking away the inheritance tax just ain't gonna work. It's not gonna work for Nebraska taxpayers, it's not gonna work for Nebraska voters. So invite your senators to your board meetings. I, I, I thought about perhaps inviting a few senators for board meetings where I saw on the agenda that you're gonna talk about budget. I said, "That's not my place, but I'm going to implore you, if you're, if you have an agenda item that you think is important for them to hear about, something that could affect legislation down the line, invite your state senator." And believe me, and I'll go back to what I said earlier, if you invite them, they're gonna come running because they want to hear what you guys have to say. And as you know, we have a, an election next year. We're going to have at least 14 new senators will be elected next year, at least five will be from Douglas County. There are seven seats up in Douglas County, as you probably are, are aware. And invite those candidates. Find out who's declared, invite those candidates to your board meeting so they understand what's going on with county government. Because again, our voters are their voters and they need to understand that. Arrange candidate forums. We'll help. NACO is, we are committed to making sure that we're going to properly vet all the folks that are interested in being in our legislature because what they do in the legislature is going to affect us. This year in the legislature, they had 820 bills that were introduced. And I would tell you that 279 of them affected county government in one way, shape, or form. That's over a third. And that is consistent with what we've seen over the years. And so again, we have to be engaged. The other thing I want, I'm gonna get off the depressing subject of the legislature. One of the things I do want to mention is that, one of the things that we researched at, at NACO is how counties spend their money. And we've gone through budgets for all 93 counties. We've kind of arranged them into, into broad groupings. And one of the things that we discovered actually last year is that usually we think of a big three counties. We think of Douglas, Lancaster, and Sarpy. And in actuality, I would tell you that there's a big five when you look at how counties manage their spending priorities. You would have to add Hall and Buffalo Counties into that mix because when you look at how they spend their money and the broad categories that they're spending their money on, which public safety, you know, and those sorts of things, they spend their money the exact same way that you guys do. And it's not even close. It's not like you could squint your eyes and say, "Well, you know, maybe they're, they're sort of similar to Dodge and maybe they're similar to, to Sarpy." They're the, they're, they're the same as the big three. And I think that's important because that shows that there are more counties that are dealing with the same sort of issues that you deal with. And that's a pretty impressive block, I think, as far as a voting block is concerned. So reach out to your friends. You're not alone, you never were, you had Lancaster and Sarpy, but you've, you've got another couple counties out there that are, that are dealing with the same issues as well. And then the last thing I want to mention is, I'll start where I, at the beginning, or I'll end, I'll end at the beginning, which is, I am here because it is your Association of County Officials. Your staff is here to help you. So when I'm, it's not just me. Candace Meredith is the Deputy Director. You've got Luke Bonkewich, who's our Research Policy Analyst. You got Nathan Aronson, who does research for us. Peggy Brass is our Office Clerk. Elaine Menzel, Beth Farrell, they're both your staff attorneys. Mike Bowden is your, our Insurance Benefits Coordinator and Judd Allen's your, your Insurance Marketing Rep. Those people all work for you. If there is anything that you need to have discussed from a NACO standpoint, we are going to be here to help. So if you, if you ask me to be on an, on an agenda, we might have to negotiate the schedule, but I will be here and so will the staff. And so with that, I am happy to take any questions that you might have, but I really appreciate the opportunity to be on your agenda today.
Thank you. I see no lights, but again, appreciate the time for you coming and giving us an update on our NACO.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's fun to invite you to the party that we have in Kearney every year. It's more meaningful when we come to where you guys are.
That's right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, he's from Lincoln. He's from NACO, the Nebraska Association.
I mean, he lives in.
Yeah, he lives in Lincoln.
I live in Lincoln.
I might mention one thing to you.
Yes, sir.
If that's okay.
Yep, go ahead.
This year, we had the second highest number of complaints that we've had in 25 years for Douglas County as far as on their property taxes.
Protest.
The number of protests.
Sure.
About, I think, just over 7,000 so far from what our county clerk, Dan Ish, has put out. There's a part of me that, and I know that Mike Boyle followed, or I followed him on this, to try to set that the increase on residential property only could only have a 4% increase each year. We think we have a state senator that's probably gonna introduce something in the next session. I don't want to take up time today, but might like to hear your thoughts on that at some point in time. And it would maybe just be for Douglas County unless some other counties felt they wanted to become involved or their state senators did. And it's just something where we're seeing people with 30 to 50% increases. And I have a lady that contacted me from 48th Street and some others from Benson on 60th, that their payment has gone up like $270 from what it was four years ago, their house payment due to the escrow account and the tax increases. So you might file that away and if you need my phone number, my cell, I'd love to give it to you so we could talk about it a little bit further.
Sure.
I don't want to take the commissioners' or public time on this.
No, I get that. I'll, I'll be happy to visit with you about that. As a matter of fact, I, I brought my, my own business cards, I'll leave some with Dan. And you're welcome to give me a call at any time. Frankly, I, I would invite you to call me, I mean, literally anytime. 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, which is cool because my, my wife is taking calls at 11 o'clock on a Saturday night, so I'll leave my card with Dan.
So did you leave your number with someone here?
I'm going to right now.
Okay, great. Dad can get it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Larry.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. This is kind of what I was talking about earlier. We have a gentleman that's from Lincoln. But he earns his living representing an outsider, the National Association of County Officials. They're stakeholders, we the people are not. Our state constitution calls us the electors. You're responsible to us, not to people from outside, who are probably tax-free organizations to start with, and helping you write your legislation and telling you what to go down and tell Lincoln to do. Probably against us. You've heard lots of things, including about property tax. You should do this, you should do that. You need to be listening to us, not them. Don't you get it? This is a completely reverse of the intention of government. And it, I don't think you're aware because you're so busy that you don't know how many citizens are really getting their backs up about it. And it's gonna come to a head, hopefully before the next election, so we don't have another stolen one. But the people that were supposed to represent us are not. And that's why the Declaration of Independence implied that when they are not, it is your right and your duty to alter, change, throw off, and replace with one that will. Not a revolution, but to change it. That's our right and our duty. Do you understand that? How much money do you spend going to the National Association of Medics? We'd like you to spend it somewhere else, like on mental health. And by the way, I'm going to amend my comments and you can cut me off if you want on an earlier thing.
I'm going to because.
Thank you. Why don't you cut Louis Amanez off?
Thank you, Larry.
Violation.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
Nicole Leclerc, just super briefly, is Mr. Cannon who you would speak to about mental health? Because we continue to hear about going down to the state to get help with long-term residential mental health. So I'm just wondering if that's who you would speak to? Just a question, very briefly, but very importantly.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the presentation? Again, thank you, Mr. Cannon, for being with us today. With that, we will move to our public hearing. We have a public hearing for a Class C 125822 licensed beer wine distilled spirits on and off sale for the Rack and Spirits, 15530 Ida Street, Suite 300 in Bennington. The manager application is Ricardo Pagean, 4659, 4659 North 209th Elkhorn. This is the public hearing.
I guess so. I'm Paul Dawkins, I'm a co-owner of the Rack Wine and Spirits. Ricardo's in Puerto Rico at his brother's wedding. I apologize for him not being able to be here. I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
Perfect. Is there anyone wishing to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You can report to Ricardo when he gets back. With that, we'll move to committees. Our first being the budget, finance, being the budget report as presented. And then we'll move to human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Legislative issues, none at this time. And then Item 3, the resolution setting the County Board of Commissioner salaries for 25, 26. twenty-six. Is there a motion to approve? No motion to approve on the salaries. No, we have to set it now, and setting it for the future, twenty-five and twenty-six, the resolution calls for a no increase for those two years.
No increase for those two years?
Two years for twenty-five and twenty-six. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No, that's fine. I was wondering if this had come up before in committee, or has there been any discussion on this?
No, we've, no. We've said it every year about this time. Sometimes it's a little later in September, but no. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Please vote. Oh, Larry. Just a minute.
May I comment on legislative issues?
No, we're past that. This is on setting the board's salary. Go ahead and vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
With that, we do have need for an executive session for litigation, labor, and legal advice.
Contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations.
As well, thank you.
Is there a motion to go into executive session? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
This is the county board. We are reconvening and adjourning.
Okay, great, thank you. I guess we're afternoon, so good afternoon commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Lori Persch, the Douglas County Director of Budget and Finance as of July 1st of this year. I am, we've been working on the budget for the last few months and I'm here today to present the proposed budget for Douglas County for fiscal year 2324 of 554 million.
How do we pull that up Karen?
Oh, it's on one but not the other, got it.
Never mind, I see it. Okay, so I thought we'd start off with looking at the tax levy. The tax levy has been the same for the past 10 years with only one change. There was an increase in fiscal year 2019, 2020, penny and a half increase for the juvenile justice center across the street, but other than that, the commissioners have kept that flat over the period. The last column is of course marked in blue because that is tentative. The actual levy for 2324 will get set in September. Another key point when we talk property taxes is with the property taxes, when they get the owners, when they get their property tax bill, the county only accounts for about 13% of the total bill right now. The city is approximately 21% and 55% goes to our schools. So there's always discussion about high property taxes in Nebraska and it's really not the county funding that's primarily driving these high property taxes as much as the support for schools. As of January of this year, Nebraska ranked 49th in direct aid for state schools, I mean direct state aid for schools, but Governor Pillen had proposed LD 583 which would increase direct state aid for schools, more so for the rural schools, but also somewhat for the urban schools as well. So we'll see how that shakes out and what this looks like next year, but as of right now, the schools are still the primary portion of recipients of those property tax dollars. So some key assumptions for our budget for the next fiscal year. First of all, property tax proceeds, we expect to increase by 9%. This number is based on data that we have received from the county assessor's office. Could possibly be perhaps a bit higher, but after all the Board of Equalization hearings, there's still an amount that would come off of that initial estimate. And per the clerk's office, 2023 was the second highest year, I think we talked about this earlier in the board meeting prior, for valuation protests, I can only to 2007, so just to be conservative, we kept it at 9%. Oh, sorry. So another key assumption, we anticipate fund revenues will be at least prior, even to prior year. Also expect department wage and salary expenses to increase by 5% and all other expenses to increase at 2%, just a little bit higher than we've used in some years, but again, it's an inflationary period, so I think looking at where we're at versus inflation, I think we're still trying to hold that back somewhat. Departments will not exceed their budget targets in the requested budget submissions. So that being said, there are always a few departments that have requests that exceed their target. This year, we had six departments, the sheriff, county attorney, public defender, civil service, emergency management, and the county court, for a total of 1.76 million over the initial target that had been set by finance. You will note that four of those six are part of the criminal justice system and it's my understanding that this has kind of been a recurring problem year over year, not just for Douglas County, but just for criminal justice in general, that their costs have been increasing at a rate greater than inflation and the other costs. So this is not specifically a Douglas County issue, but all of these departments have had to come and present to you, to the board here at one of these Tuesday meetings, the case for why they are over their, the target that had been set. So on the revenue side, a couple of the key drivers. Again, the 9% increase in assessed property values. Interest income was higher this past year and rates are obviously still higher due to the higher interest rates. Douglas County Treasurer did work with three plus one cash vest to look at the cash management and make sure that we are getting the best rates available for all of our funds, our money market deposits and whatnot, to make sure that we are, you know, taking advantage of the higher interest rates. We also had record inheritance tax collections in the last fiscal year. There were probably just a handful of key people that drove that, so this isn't something that we anticipate, you know, obviously or can't depend on year over year going forward, those collections being as high as they were 26.5 million last year, but it is worth noting. So these increases in revenue allowed the requested budget, including the department overages on, from the previous page, to generate a surplus, or I want to call it a contingency of approximately 1 million for fiscal year 2324. And the reason why I'm referring to it as a contingency as opposed to a surplus is the fact that we have a couple of projects that are still in the pipeline that are not, haven't been formally approved, but are definitely coming down the pipe. One of those, of course, is the need for a new ERP system. I think our current ERP was implemented 20 years ago or so, Oracle EBS, and so we are due for an upgrade, I mean, not an upgrade, not version 2.3 to 2.4, but rather a whole system implementation here soon for our finance systems, for our HCM, human capital management systems, so that's coming up. And in addition, I think I've spoken with the treasurer about the need for a new lands record management system. So just keeping in mind that what looks like a surplus if these other things coming down the pipe get approved, we will need to be using those funds. So proposed budget for 2324, obviously by statute, we have to have a separate public hearing, which is what we're doing right now. Summary of the adopted budget, first of all, the budget contains no assumed increase in the tax levy, I think I mentioned that earlier. It assumes a 9% increase in total county assessed property values. We'll get the final certified numbers on August 20th from the county assessor. The total, it assumes a total budget of 554 million, which is a budget of 502.6 million excluding the 51.6 million in ARPA funding, which is our remaining award. I'm looking at it exclusive of that, just because obviously the ARPA is a one-time, I guess it was a two-time, but I don't anticipate that anymore, obviously. And so that's a 4.9%. And so that's a 4.9% increase above last year's final modified budget, driven by increased labor costs in criminal justice and healthcare operations, and a 15% increase in road and bridge project spending. The general fund budget, which is, of course, the biggest portion of our total budget, excluding the $51.6 again of ARPA funding, is $263 million, which is 5.4% above last year's final modified budget, primarily due to increased payroll and employee benefit expenses, along with increase in facility operating costs. Those payroll and employee benefit expenses, the labor environment is driving that. So in order to get and retain employees, we have to be competitive, which has been especially a challenge, and you guys probably are familiar with this already, but corrections, law enforcement, and healthcare. And then finally, a hearing regarding the final tax rate will occur in September after the final evaluation is certified on August 20th. So next two slides, we'll look at the revenues, and that's the budget transfers. So I'm going to use an analogy or metaphor that Joe used last year. We are in Douglas County, and a lot of governments have a three-legged stool, where you've got property tax, income tax, and sales tax to use. In Douglas County, we solely have property tax. We are a one-legged stool. So the only other double-digit line item, you can see from this pie chart, the only other double-digit item that we have as a source of revenue is the general fund department revenues, which are the revenues and fees that we get from the services provided by those departments. Okay, budget transfers. So we, budget transfers this year were $22 million. We have budgeted $18 million. It looks like we're going down. The truth is, we had actually originally budgeted $16 million last year, but we ended up increasing that during the year. We had such high inheritance tax revenues coming in that we transferred, you can see on that very top line, it was $20 million. The initial budget for that was $14 million. But because we had extra revenues coming in there, we, and we had a need in our medical insurance fund because of some high, high-cost medical claims, and again, you know, those are, no way to really predict those or what year those are going to pop up or how big those might be. But we ended up transferring $6 million from the inheritance tax fund over to the medical insurance fund to cover those. So we anticipate that that's an anomaly. There's obviously no way to really predict that. And I know, we discussed the inheritance tax earlier. It is an important part of our budget here in Douglas County because it's used to fund the departments that are providing social services, such as the health center and CMHC. However, we do not use the inheritance tax funds to support any general fund expenditures. So those are all principally supported by just the property tax alone. Just a good fact to know in case that would get taken away by, you know, at some point by some legislation. So it would affect us in other ways. The social service is primarily, not necessarily what we do in the general fund. And then the last slide here is, just looks at the change in the taxable valuation over the last 20 years. And over the last 20 years, our valuations have more than doubled, not necessarily linear growth. Here, you can see on the right, kind of went down and then back up. I don't think we anticipate such large increases in valuations going forward, especially on the commercial side. So we expect budgets will be tighter in future years. So with that, I will open it to any questions or comments.
Thank you, Lori. Commissioner Morgan?
To thank you and great job by you for your first budget. Question for you. It says certified on August 20th. That's a Sunday, I think.
Oh, maybe I have the wrong date then. I thought it was August 20th of the year.
Dan Ash, County Clerk. If it falls on a weekend, it's just the following Monday.
Okay, I thought when it had to be certified, maybe there's a vote or something. And then the other thing I might suggest, if we do have, and I know that the facility across the street, the correction and the Hall of Justice, which was a greater cost, by far, probably closer to the $100 million versus a $23, $27 million for the youth center. My thought was, it came in under budget by $3 or $5 million. My thought was, we should put some of the extra money. Our rainy day fund was not as good as you'd like to maybe see it, and I just want to be sure we're maybe putting some monies into that rainy day fund, our reserve. And we can talk about that later. I'm not suggesting the amount, but I leave that to you to have a recommendation, looking at the numbers at some point in time.
Appreciate the suggestion, yeah.
If that's appropriate for me to say. And I thank you again. And Joe.
Yeah, I really can't take, this has been a joint effort of Joe pulling this together and me working alongside him.
I want to say it's almost 13 and a half years. 12 and a half. Time flies when you're on the front.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks for your presentation, Lori. Just a couple of comments. More than anything is, I'm hoping that with the governor's statement that he wants to make some of the public school funding come from the state, I'm hoping that that is actually going to help decrease some of the property tax burden that we experience here in Douglas County, since 55% of our property taxes go to the schools. I think it's especially important to note that because I know that our amount of revenue will increase because property tax valuations have gone up. At the same time, I know that with, we all agree with, it's important for the assessor to do the job to try to stabilize that, bring that down, so each individual is not paying more property taxes, since, of course, that's such a burden. So I know that our revenues are going to be going down because this assessor is dedicated to working with the state senators to change those laws that have required taxes to rate, property taxes to raise at the rate that they have in the past. So I think there's a couple of things we have to watch for, but hopefully it will be offset. One is that we will see lower revenues as far as property taxes go in the future because of the work the assessor is going to try to do to decrease property taxes, which, again, we all support. And then we're going to lose that inheritance tax most likely. So we're going to see decreased revenues, but I'm hopeful that the big hit really is from the public schools. So if the governor is able to put forth his promise to provide more state funding for that, I'm hoping that that will help balance out what's happening in the future so that we're not paying for our sheriff's department, our public, our county attorneys and all that, or our criminal justice system, and have to raise the tax levy based on those types of requirements. But, so I'm hopeful. I'm just curious what, if you have any insight on what perhaps, I don't know if you've looked at the governor's plan at all or have any idea, or if he's even rolled it out yet about what that would entail or how it could positively impact our budget.
Yeah, I don't know the impact yet. I just, I know it was signed on May 31st, and, you know, I'll work with Marcos or whoever to get to the bottom of that and figure out how that's going to affect us. But I would love to see some property tax relief as well.
Yep, yep. All right, great. Well, thanks a lot.
Any other questions or comments from board members? I'll just make one real quick, and that is, I was kind of disappointed that the slide I sent, so I'll send it out to everybody, wasn't included in here regarding the Cash Vest Three Plus One project. That was brought in back in 2020, and of that, on page five, where it talks about interest income increases due to higher interest rate, $8.2 million, well, $6.5 of that $8.2 is from Cash Vest. We have paid $147,000 in fees, but again, if you look at what we've paid out and what we've brought in, that's a 44 times return. And so I think that's something to be touted from our seats and also to the taxpayers, that we were able to bring a national program into this county, and this is for Larry's benefit, to, again, increase our revenues $6.5 million. And I give a lot of credit to our treasurer's department and staff for working with Three Plus One to come up with these, again, tremendous, in my opinion, outcomes for that $147,000. So with that, no other commissioners. Lights are on. I open it up to the public, those in the chamber, and then anyone on Zoom after that. Doug?
Good morning. Doug Kagan, 416 South 130th Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Although the county tax levy will remain the same, valuations have risen by about 9%, thus giving county coffers a windfall. We understand that the current high inflation will consume much of that enhanced revenue. However, knowing that you can balance the upcoming budget with these funds, overall revenue increasing by 9%, commissioners still should explore and proceed with cutting the budget now because you never know what unanticipated expenditures may arise during the coming fiscal year. Costs in specific departments relating to criminal justice continue to rise with the rise in crime rate. Costs of specific equipment and materials and contracts continue to rise, for instance, at the County Emergency Management Agency. Inheritance tax revenue will probably be decreasing. Federal ARPA funds will not be available in the future. Therefore, we offer the following suggestions for immediate budget cuts. Eliminate the job slots of county public information officer and diversity officer. Eliminate non-mandated services like the law library and extension center. Eliminate the Health Department, maternal and child health, WIC, health education, and dental clinic services. Costs have risen here by 11%. End funding for the county fair, as most of Douglas County is now urbanized. Explore work at home options for employees. And we have a worksheet I'll pass out later for additional suggestions for budget cuts. Among positives we noted in this budget, several departments, like the sheriff's department, the Human Services Resources Department, took steps to save tax dollars even though their expenses rise in new employees hired, and several departments increased their revenue streams. NTF believes that the forecast expansion of county government responsibilities in future years will require an enormous property tax increase, noting that over 47% of the county general fund budget is supported by property taxes, unless county commissioners implement budget cuts and dispense with several non-mandated services. Determine what categories of expenses are likely to increase in future years, such as county corrections, judicial. Determine what categories of expenses may decrease during future years. Estimate what revenue sources will increase in future years, like grants, and which revenue sources may decrease, like the inheritance tax. Consider what services the state in future might fund or partially fund. Next, consider what non-mandated services the county can either trim or eliminate. Only then will county taxpayers have confidence in the fiscal responsibility of this county board. Finally, we suggest that during the department budget hearings, each department present a similar template showing the same information in similar formats, such as personnel numbers, increased or decreased expenditures, specific activity costs, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on the budget?
Hello. My name is Dennis Schloss. I live at 4512 Hickory Street. During the past year, inflation has really skyrocketed, hitting families like mine hard. We have had to cut back on everything that is not necessarily spending, so we miss out on some things that my family enjoys. I think that county government should cut back on things too, just like typical county families. You may have a balanced budget, which is good, but there are always some things that government can trim. We encourage the county to trim some expenditures that are not absolutely necessary to county government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Something I wanted to point out about the budget that was handed out on the pages, on the first and second page, and it had to do with metro area transit. Currently, it looks like it's about 23% of the total levy, and I based that on the .067 factor divided by the .29559. What I noticed on my personal levies, I get a statement every year at the beginning of the year from the Douglas County Treasurer that breaks down in detail what the levy amounts are for the different subdivisions. I noticed that in that period of time, I don't remember now offhand exactly what two years it was, but between, somewhere between 2019 and the recent one, the metro area transit piece of that levy went from .047 to .067. That's only about $1 million. In the grand scheme of things, that's not much. But that was a 45% increase in the levy. I don't know if anything's been, what discussion was made about who decided that that was okay to raise it that much. Overall, I noticed there were three other subdivisions that reduced their levies, and it, well, according to this, it had to have exactly offset that increase. With some of the conversations that have been going on lately and about some of the changes that are going on with public transportation in the downtown area, I thought that was kind of interesting that that's, that there was that much of an increase in metro area transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak on the budget?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I assume that our expenses for elections, machinery, software, and personnel counters for votes is buried somewhere in that figure for civil service of $301,267. If not, we, the people, would like to know how much we will be spending in the upcoming election before the election. We would like to request less dependency on machines, particularly the electronic vote machines and tabulators and the software that goes with it. One of the handouts that I gave you earlier talks about that problem and the fact that the machines are not reliable, and therefore, we shouldn't... I think Mr. Borer said that the Secretary of State did not renew the contract with ESNS, who was our last providers of machines and software. So before they sign a new contract, please put the kibosh down there when you go down to lobby for us, or for yourself, and tell them to go back to hand counting. Many, many countries across this world rely on hand counting and have no problems. Yes, it depends on the honesty of the people counting, and that's up to the fault of the parties that are controlling them. Let's take party structure out of the elections and the counting of elections and get back to good old American values. Thank you.
Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak on the budget? Luis?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I've been looking for...
I've been looking for information like this. Shows how much the county gets from property taxes. And if you can see on the percentage change, every year, for this century anyway, except for one time, but it's almost zero, it's increased. And I don't know what factors is convincing you guys that this is gonna be any different. So if we could get more information on that, like percentage, say, these factors are gonna contribute to the decline, because it's, the change has been single digits for a long time, 20 years it looks like. And on the, the matter on exterior impacts, or exterior effects outside of your control, inflation is talked about for a lot. You can see here from Trading Economics, inflation has been around 3%, and then there is the curve that you are familiar with. You knew this was gonna happen, it was gonna go up and down, it's down to 4%. It looks like it's gonna go down to 3% inflation overall, and that's not impacting your coffers. Inflation is not impacting your coffers. The point that I want you to take is that this is a county government, and you provide services, you're not a business, you have mandated functionality, a purpose, and this talk about that it's somehow your obligation to make the economic stability or conditions of residents here in Douglas County your responsibility? I don't buy that, because it's like a sleight of hand, that somehow that you guys, what you do, are impacting the economic conditions of the, of residents here, when, we all know, and Bernie Sanders has told this country time and time again, it is the fact that the middle class, they've been losing their buying power for the last 40 years. That's the biggest contributor, contributor to the hardships that families have, that individuals have for, you know, to get their personal income. It's a national policy, it's state policy, it's the industries, the various industries that the United States economy depends on, and the Nebraska economy depends on.
One minute?
That they have to be the ones to prioritize the middle class. It's, it really shouldn't be the county, you guys have your, the services that you need to provide, and I think it's just a confused narrative that you have, that you have a responsibility to take care of people's economic well-being. There's a reason why you collect property taxes, it's because shelter is a basic need of humans, and humans are going to provide shelters for themselves, so that's why it's a good way for the county to collect property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board that's in the chambers during this public hearing? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak to the board during the budget public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing then, and what is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend, any further questions or comments?
Motion passes, Commissioner Borgeson voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes, six to zero, we're adjourned at 12:35 PM.